All right, I would like to call to order at 7:00 the Joint School Committee on October 23. Do we have a form from Shobrin?
We do.
Go over it in the region.
We do.
Okay. Now we're really ready to go. The first item on the agenda are community comments. Do we have any community comments? First of all, thank you everybody for coming. Hearing none, we will move on to the second item on the agenda which is our Special Education Department Review. We have two wonderful guests, so thank you very much for coming. And Laura's yours. One thing I will say if possible, unless you need some clarification, please let the presentation sort of run its course because some questions you may have already might be addressed. Hopefully they'll be addressed. Therefore, those questions might not need to be asked. And then when questions are asked, if you have a question and someone else happens to ask the same question of one variety or the other, we might not necessarily need to hear it again. So try to keep that the best we can. I understand it doesn't always go that way. And if someone makes a comment that you agree with or disagree with, well, if you make a comment, someone makes a comment you agree with, we also don't necessarily need to hear that one again, but we'll do our best to sort of keep this moving.
Can I say one more?
Absolutely.
So I really appreciate that so many people are here tonight. And to hear this report, there's a lot of interest in what Dorsey and Debbie have found. This has been a kind of a long process for us. You'll recall in the strategic plan that we talked about the need to look at special education, review our program, and see what some outside folks come up with in terms of their assessment. So, thank you so much. I've seen the report, but I think it's important for folks to hear kind of your take on things. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to you guys.
Do you prefer we are up here?
Either here or here, I think.
Someone who can speak, I can't.
Wherever you're comfortable.
Hi, I'm Debbie Levine. I don't have a very loud voice and there isn't a mic here, so if you can't hear me, let me know. So just so you know a little bit about me, I've been in special education for over 30 years. I retired from Wellesley very recently. And for the past 10 years in Wellesley, I've been department head of special education at my high school. I've also worked in Wellesley for eight years in the elementary level and eight years in the middle school. So I've had a variety of experience at all different levels. I've been teaching a course for three years on special education for regular education teachers and administrators. And I'm really thrilled to do program reviews and look at program development and have done this for a variety of school systems.
And I'm Dorsey Yearley. I also worked in Wellesley for 30 years, the last 15 of which I was the Director of Student Services and then became the Executive Director of the Edco Collaborative, which I served in that role for five years. When I retired from Edco, I began doing leadership coaching and consulting around supporting change and also program reviews. I've consulted in a number of districts around here and done program reviews in districts like Wayland and Newton and surrounding towns. So this is something that we have done a lot of. And I find it fascinating and edifying to come into every new district I come into because I learn so much from the way that you do your work. And it, you know, it helps us understand what good practice is. So we do appreciate the opportunity to be here.
So I'm going to go over a little bit about the process because it has been a long process. It started in June. Dorsey met with the central office and started to hear what the needs were and what some of the guiding questions were that Dover, Dover-Shobrin, and the region were looking for. So once the guiding questions were formulated, Dorsey and I started over the summer and did interviewing all summer. And we interviewed people that worked over the summer, administrators, and continued that through the first few days in October. And throughout the time, we were pulling data from our interviews and data that's on site through DEES. And then after we met with everybody, we wanted to see the wonderful things that were going on here. So we did observations in all of the schools. And we're going to further go on with the discussions and talk about the strengths and the challenges and make recommendations. So the guiding question that came out of the first meeting was, "Does the current special education organizational structure, including the use of building-based team chairs, support an effective planning and decision-making process regarding the identification and programmatic support of students with disabilities?" So that was really our focus for this part of our interviews.
I want to interrupt for a minute and say there are three other guiding questions that have to do with staff and program use, with alignment of programs, and with collaboration with general education staff. And we have done all the information gathering relative to those questions. And we'll do some more kind of analysis and make a report in January on those additional questions. Tonight, in part because of the timing of the budget process, we're focusing only on the organizational structure question, but the others we will address in a later report. And I wanted to make sure that you on the committee know that.
Okay, so it was wonderful interviewing staff and meeting everybody. It's clearly the staff is committed, they want students to do well, they care deeply about the students and want everybody to be successful. There is investment in the buildings. Principals and the staff are really invested in the student growth and building special education within the buildings. I also felt that people were very, very open to change. And change can be hard, but we're open to hearing about different ways to provide structural assistance. And it was refreshing, actually. And as far as challenges, there were challenges came up and we basically took challenges where they kept coming up. So there was a thread, so we could follow that. We were looking at the building-based support and what's happening, is it separate-level building? What's going on in all the different buildings? And how is the support done for special education? As far as decision-making and who to go to on a day-to-day basis in the current model, who do you go to and you need to make decisions and you need to make them quickly? There needs to be planning around and being proactive and looking what's coming through the system and building programs around that, not just being reactive to students. And there needs to be an aligned process with the IEP. And I don't mean that everything needs to be the same in every school, but there needs to be an IEP process so that everybody's following a similar process. And there needs to be collaboration between special ed and regular education, and that could continue to grow.
So with the findings that we heard from many, many stakeholders, we thought long and hard, given the number of models of administration that you've had, about how to address the needs that we heard in this particular information gathering session. And clearly, there was an expressed need for more administrative leadership at the special education. And it felt to us like a structural deficiency, not a personnel deficiency, that in order to provide the collaborative leadership, the instructional leadership, the programmatic leadership, and the technical leadership that special education administrators have to do, you needed more than one person. And then we struggled with, so should we create, should we suggest department head positions with one person overseeing all of that, or should we look at a different model? And one of the other things that we heard was that there needed to be, there was a need for more alignment and understanding among and between the three districts, that the programs, the experience for families needed to feel very integrated from preschool all the way up to high school. And so we struggled with the idea of if we sustain building-based leadership as well as just one person at the top, the schools themselves would maintain, they would be very skillful about what was going on in their school, but they wouldn't have the ongoing opportunity to learn about what's happening at other schools. And so for that reason, we decided that a model which had a person responsible for all of special education, and we'll talk also a little bit about student services, with a coordinator position underneath that accomplished both those goals of supporting collaboration among the districts and creating the opportunity for the building-based presence they needed. And that was the thinking behind this model, a Director of Student Services and a Coordinator of Special Education. Now, those two positions can be deployed in any one of a number of ways. We suggested that the coordinator work at the elementary level and provide consistent leadership across the two districts and that the Director of Student Services have primary responsibility for the region and be the person who provides that building-based leadership at the region. That is one model. And what you will hear us say is that, once the staffing is decided, the next step is really to be very clear about the roles and responsibilities of everybody that is in this new model. Because another consistent theme we heard was with all of these variations of leadership that you've tried, there hasn't been a strong implementation plan. People haven't been clear about whose job it was to do this and whose job it was to do that. And that's why there's been some confusion around who to go to to get a question answered. So we have laid out a staffing pattern and then made some suggestions. And then we're charging the districts with really getting down into the weeds, figuring out who's going to do what, and roll it out in a very clear way. So this is the model we're proposing is a Director with a Coordinator of Special Education, a team chair position at the elementary level that will support the two districts along with the Coordinator of Special Education. And then a team chair position at the region that will be augmented by the out-of-district coordinator who can provide more of the team chair function at the region. And additionally, the Director of Student Services will be the building-based presence, the leader at the region. So essentially, there'll be, you know, three people, although clearly are out-of-district coordinator has responsibilities, that will take her out of the district. But there will be three people at the region. We are proposing a student services model in part because of what we see as the emerging needs of the district. And what we hear everywhere is that the emerging social and emotional needs of students everywhere require a really skillful collaboration between the general education supports for students and the special education supports. You have administrators in place who support the general education supports. You have a guidance director, obviously your principals do all of that. We're not suggesting any of that be changed. We're suggesting that the Director of Student Services could be another collaborative leader with those existing leadership positions so that what happens in general ed is very well coordinated with what happens in special ed. Not only in support of students with, you know, the more traditional learning issues, but also in support of students with emerging behavioral and social issues. In addition to the guidance and counseling support, the nursing program would fall under the Director of Student Services. And that would create a kind of comprehensive structure for all students with disabilities or with at-risk factors to kind of be in a more supportive environment. But we still envision that the Student Services Director would spend the vast majority of their time, his or her time focusing on special education issues. This is not an uncommon model. It's much more typical to have a Director of Student Services than to have just a special education director. And it still is the case that the Director of Student Services is very much responsible for special education. So there will be the vast majority of this person's time would focus on special education. So that's kind of the structure we're thinking about. Just the last slide is the rest of the recommendations. And it is just because we've heard about the need for clarity, going forward, once the model is established, the work is to really define the roles and responsibilities, make sure that all the needs are covered, people know what they're doing, and everybody going forward knows who to go to for what question. I also, we also suggest that this spring is used for some kind of visioning of what all three districts want special education to be, to develop a shared kind of vision. And that's in part so that you can begin identifying what kind of information will be helpful to determine where we are and where we want to be. One of the things that we did find is that the data gathering in the three districts is somewhat different. And so we would ask a question from the three districts around something like, let's say, "How many rejected IEPs did you have?" And because people keep records differently, that wasn't as straightforward as simply going to one place where, you know, all of the information about every time a rejected IEP gets sent to the BSEA. It would be logged somewhere in a central location and we could get that. So we're thinking that, you know, if you identify that you want to create within district capacity so that students are better supported within district, I'm making that up. But say that's a long-term vision, then start now thinking, "What's the information we need now to see where we are currently? What's the information we're going to need going forward to see if we're making progress? And what's our target?" And that again is work that could be done this spring. And I think then, building on that, next year is the real strategic planning year with the staff in place to say, "Now we have a vision. What is it we want to do first, second, and third in terms of rolling out a real strategic plan to move forward?" So I think, just last comment, we do think that there's lots of wonderful things going on and there's opportunity for programming that will continue to build the capacity of the district. But in order for that to happen, you really have to have a leadership model that's stable, that people understand, that you invest in, and that supports your staff. And I think that's where you start. That's what this is about, is establishing that organizational model.
If you are comfortable and if you'd like, I'm sure there's going to be some questions and comments that I'd love it if you could address.
Of course.
Would you prefer to stand or we can bring some chairs up and you can sit and be more comfortable there?
Doesn't make any difference to me. Yeah, we can stand.
Are you sure?
Yeah, we're happy.
All right. Well, I'll tell you what, we'll start there and if you need to adjust, you can. We still have extra chairs.
Well, yeah. We reserve the right to change our minds.
As do we.
Making sense.
Got any other questions?
No. Thank you very much. I so appreciate the fact that you guys were willing to do this for us. It was really important to us that we have somebody look at it kind of from the balcony with a different lens on, because you're not so in it. Yet you spent the time that I think was absolutely critical to really understand our program, to understand the challenges that we have. The information that you received from many, many stakeholders, many of those who are here tonight, had to be synthesized. It can't just be, you know, you couldn't just throw thousands of things on the screen. So you had the challenge of not only coming into a system that you're unfamiliar with, but building enough trust through conversation to get people to share candidly with you what's working for them and what the challenges are. And so I really appreciate that. On behalf of the whole system, I just want to say thank you for doing this. It's hugely important to us and I think will guide us greatly. So, thank you.
To the committees, any questions?
Are the questions intended to be just based on the presentation?
I think you can ask in the presentation or if you have any questions to Andrew and to the proposal. I'd like to just get it all out there while we can.
Okay, maybe a couple of questions. On the agenda, it doesn't provide for action required, but I understood maybe just before the meeting that that might be a request, that there's some action taken tonight?
I think we should see the discussions. There is an on-the-agenda for action required. So if we would like to discuss and have some, you know, meaningful conversations, and then we can either maybe wait till January or if there's an opportunity to bring us together to make a decision sooner if that affects the opportunity for hiring or posting or whatever, we can reserve judgment for that. But I wouldn't necessarily feel we have to make an action today because it's not on the agenda to do so. So I'd like to just get it out there first.
Okay, well, I would voice a strong objection to taking any action tonight. I for one would love to hear from these folks offline and anybody else in the community after this is published and available.
You're in good shape so far.
Would recommendations be any different if this were one district rather than three?
That's a very good question. In my experience, in a district, you know, a K-12 district, that's one district, the elementary schools also have very unique cultures and strengths and ways of supporting diverse learners. And it can look very different even within a district that has, you know, only one expectation in terms of leadership. What is different about the region is some of the technical things are also different. So that the way the IEPs are written and processed is, you know, is again, what we heard from people is that it's different in each of the districts. And so having some way to bridge that so that the IEP procedures are a little more aligned is one of the reasons that we thought having a coordinator who could work with the two elementary districts and interface with the Director of Student Services at the region level made sense. The goal is clearly not to make the districts the same. I mean, you know, to respect the unique cultures and identities of each district is really important. But, you know, having a kind of centralized IEP process, for example, where you can, you know, you can get the data you need about what's going on across the three districts in one location would be helpful and would be supported by having this configuration. So in that respect, I think it is somewhat related to the regional structure.
And so do you think that the recommendations would be the same or quite similar if this were one district?
Yeah, quite possibly.
I think you need to have more administration with hands-on in the building.
Oh, absolutely.
Whether it's one district or a region, you can't just have one person overseeing the whole district.
Right, right. The districts that we looked at that weren't regional districts had, all of them had at least two full-time administrators. And then different ways of supporting the IEP process. But yes, you know, definitely, we feel no matter the regional structure, you need more administrative leadership.
Sure, and just to follow up to that, the full-time administrators, were those both Director of Special Ed and in some instances and other instances Director of Student Services, which clearly isn't a 1-0, right? That's somewhat, by definition, it has to be something less than a 1-0.
Yes, yes. By definition, there are multiple responsibilities, although I can tell you, having been a Director of Student Services, that you spend the vast majority of your time on special education. So it's not full-time. We did not find another district that had just a Director of Special Education. Most districts have gone to a Director of Student Services model.
Okay. Thank you so much for your work. And I have a special interest in the students who have social and emotional problems and may have been, in some sense, orphans, at least at the region, because do they fall under guidance, do they fall under special ed, what if they don't have an IEP? And so I'm really happy about this notion of a Director of Student Services. My question is, I have a couple of questions. Let me just ask both of them. One is about building support in the region because I think that the middle school and the high school are vastly different. The way they approach special education is different. The way the programs are structured are different. Their schedules are different. And that's a big job for a Director of Student Services to also be boots-on-the-ground, knowing all of the players at both of those buildings and advocating for them. Is that too much for one job? And the other question I have is if you have a Director of Special Education for the elementary schools, who's taking care of those social and emotional, the social and emotional well-being, students who have issues with that? You know, are they the school psychologists who, I don't know if any of them are here, but who don't seem to have an advocate as, you know, a designated advocate in their buildings? Does that make sense?
Yes, it does, it does. The scope of the job, I think, is doable because the schools are quite small, although you do need to know the culture of each school at the region. But, I mean, part of the challenge is that this is a relatively small, three-district region, given the number of students enrolled. And, you know, in the report that we wrote, you know, it didn't seem to make sense to look at the regional structures of the other greater Boston regions because there are twice as many students. You know, a Concord-Carlisle, a Lincoln-Sudbury didn't give us any information about good organizational structure because you would be way overstaffed if you replicated that structure just because you were region because they literally have twice to two-and-a-half times as many students. So figuring out how to work with the regional structure and have an effective use of skillful staff was a challenge. And, you know, I would say that the devil is going to be in the detail and that the goal is to, you know, look at this staffing model and really dig down to, okay, so if this is who we have, who's going to do what? What's this team chair going to do? How are we going to parse out the responsibility? What is the new student services person actually going to be able to do boots-on-the-ground? And if you get down into the weeds and you really feel their unmet needs, then, you know... then, you know, then that, we would suggest you figure out a way to address them. It's our belief that this is sufficient, but in order to really figure it out, you have to kind of get down to the level of, let's figure out all the roles and assignments and all of that. At the elementary level, part of the reason to have this student services umbrella is the, the kind of guidance and counseling function that I call the well-child function. You know, the appropriate social, emotional supports for children who are really developing normally but may have a hiccup in their, in their life or go through a difficult transition. The, the student services role allows the Director of Guidance at the high school and the, and the supports, the guidance supports at the, at the elementary school to have somebody who is their advocate in the central office to say, hey, guys, this is a slice that we need to pay attention to as well. So in addition to the building principals, who would, you know, who would be clearly advocating for, for those general ed supports, you would now have a student services director who would be able to say, I'm looking at this pre-K to 12 and I'm seeing that this kind of need is emerging and we really, we really need help. So I see the student services role doing that.
And the two would need to work very closely together, the coordinator, and that would give them two administrators to do that.
Can I just build on that, please? So, sorry, but so what Judy said and what Michael said, so now the Director of Student Services is coordinating the elementary school through the, sort of the pre-K through 12, plus they're doing the student services, plus they're doing, we're adding, we've already added more things to what they're doing. And I continue to worry a little bit about, so I was thinking, oh, so maybe it's a point eight. Now I'm like, well, it's a point seven or point six. And I also know that the needs, the SEL needs have increased significantly, I would say, even in the last five years, not just here, but everywhere. And so basing this on a model that worked even five years ago may not be accurate. And, and it's hard for us to really make, to understand the decisions that we need to make if we're being told, well, try it out and sort of see.
No, that's not what we're suggesting.
But that is sort of what you just said, though. We have to get, dig into the weeds and see what works. And then if it doesn't work and if it's too big a role, then we can add. And I know we can't know all the answers, and I get that. But I worry a little bit that if we're starting with a role that we're like, that's huge, and we've already put in somebody for the elementary schools, then in essence, it's sort of, I'm thinking, all right, so in a couple of years, we're going to need to be putting somebody in at the district potentially. And then we'd have the Director of Student Services overseeing both of that, but then that's another administrative position.
Yeah, I don't think that...
Can I comment on that? Because this was, that's a great question and it's, it's come up a lot in our discussions, like when we looked at this model. And I think that the, the thinking, as I understand it, is that because the Director of Student Services, who oversees student services pre-K 12, has now an administrative arm at the elementary level to oversee special education K to five, would then have that much of their kind of responsibilities removed and hence could concentrate as the building overseer of special education at the region. The student services piece is just, from what I've heard, is, the student services piece is not so much that we're not providing good student services, but the coordination of it is left kind of to chance because the guidance counselors at the elementary level speak to the principals and work with the principals predominantly. And then at the region, we have a 612 department head for special education, I mean, for guidance counseling. But the actual oversight of it, so that there's consistency and continuity, is missing. And so I think that was the rationale of the student services piece, because we know our student services component is in fact becoming a greater and greater issue. And when we don't meet those kids' needs in terms of their student services, they can easily move into special education. And so it's like, like an RTI model. We want to provide those interventions at the guidance level before things spin out of control. So I thought that the rationale was, was that. That the director, the director as it was, as a special ed director, was overseeing all special education for the system. And we had systems, I mean, buildings with principal oversight of the team chairs, but the team chairs didn't necessarily, if I heard what you found correctly, necessarily have as much administrative oversight as they kind of needed in the process of making, kind of, big special education decisions. So that, that's kind of been lacking. Thought that was...
Yeah, I, again, you know, we've recommended a model that we think will, will be effective and will provide what you need. And I, the, the issue of the general ed supports and special ed supports for kids with, with emerging social, emotional needs is very real. This is an administrative structure that will hopefully provide the strategic planning and the oversight to come back to you in a thoughtful way and say, we need more direct service staff. We don't need, we don't need more administrative staff. We need more boots-on-the-ground staff. I mean, that would be how this might roll out, that, you know, the, the, the job of the administrators is to do the strategic planning, to look at the changes, to look at the emerging needs, and to, to create capacity within the district that meets those needs, particularly in a way that, that helps you keep kids within district rather than go out of district. So, so the emerging needs may not be at the administrative level. I, I don't think they would be. I think it would be coming back and advocating for, we want to make some programmatic changes. We may be asking for some, some different kind of staffing there. And so I didn't mean to mislead you that, you know, this is a model that we think, oh, we'll try this one and then next year we'll come back with something else, because we are aware that, you know, there has, there have been many changes. And we want to, we want to help you figure out a model that will work for the future, where you can have, you know, people who come and, and have, have the support they need to, to do the work. But that's what I meant by those, you know, you, you may see some requests for changes, but it won't be for more administrators. Does that make sense?
That does, thank you.
This is for Dr. Keough. I was wondering how the newly resurrected District-wide Emergency Response Team would fit in with this model.
I don't think we've morphed it into this proposal, but I think that there is a connection. So when we had our most recent emergency response meeting, we actually brought that, we brought the counselors to the table in that conversation to ensure that that particular piece of the conversation is not left out, because the, kind of, the wellbeing of our kids does in fact impact our safety to a certain degree. So I don't see a direct connect, although I would say that the Director of Student Services would sit on that committee, absolutely. And so that we, as a committee, can make sure that we have a proper transfer of information. If we have difficulty with a student in the fourth grade, does that information guarantee, possibly, potentially guaranteed, make its way through the system so that the student is, is receiving the services that they need along the way and is frankly on the radar? And so I did definitely see a connection, primarily in the role of sitting on the committee.
Thank you.
Hi, I am probably the longest-serving member on the committee, so I've seen this happen probably three or four times already. And when you made the comment about alignment between schools and between districts, I think we as school committee members recognize that that's something we struggle with and administrators struggle with day in and day out. And here at DS, we're not looking to do it like Concord Carlisle does it or whatever does it. You know, we have to do it our own way and what works for us.
Of course.
And so, you know, yes, we've had a Director of Student Services presented to us before. And, you know, for various reasons, it worked or didn't work. And for me to move forward with this, I believe some of what's underneath this will help gain traction and understanding for why this model, and it may not even be, I need a team chair or I need, you know, the audit district coordinator to do X. It may be, these are the issues and these are the questions we need to solve for. How are we going to solve for that? Not even having all the answers. So as we look to plan our budgets and plan for next year, we know what are the strategic issues we're trying to solve. Because at the end of the day, you know, that can be solved in many ways. And in order to sort of, you know, comforts, the wrong word, but to fully understand why that model would work, in our instance, in the coming 12 months, 24 months, 48 months, we're hoping it's a system that lasts for a while, I think some of that detail will help, help it gain strength. Secondly, we're responsible for budgets and benefits, like it or not. Some of these are, are three-district positions, and so we need to have some understanding of how those are funded, where that money comes from, how that works, and the reporting structure there. And Andrew, if you can remind us of our legal sort of duties in terms of districts having a Director of Special Ed? And I know we sort of, by, there was some discussion when we went from three to one, that we could share one. And does a Director of Student Services meet whatever those legal requirements are? I've long forgotten that.
The answer to the last question is yes. And districts of, of a certain size, all districts must have an administrator of special education. But districts of a certain size do not have to have a full-time administrator of special education. And you are still within that size, that this, this allocation would meet the legal needs for the three districts because each district on its own is, is small. So that, the regulatory answer we can say is yes, this model would...
The district's under 4,000. Right, I knew there was something.
Right, right, right.
Give some more room.
Yeah. And Dawn and Andrew, you'll be able to, at some point, talk to us about budget benefit, how that all works with shared district positions, et cetera.
Absolutely. And I do have, I do have a handout that I wanted to, trying to find the right opportunity to do this for the committee members. So if you could just grab, it's two pages each. And then what you'll see is it provides you with the structure in comparison with FTEs allocated, kind of, marked on it. And it also, the second page shows the, at least the cost. And if this model were to proceed, the cost is essentially neutral. So I know some of you asked that question via your chairs, and so I want to make sure you have that information in front of you. What the chart shows you is, it's kind of, the proposed structure shows kind of highlighted in green parts that are the responsibilities of the Director of Student Services for oversight. And the other part in black, I think it is, is the coordinator. Is that correct?
The black is just non-special education.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Yes. Right, so the purpose of that was to show, you know, what falls into student services and what falls into special education.
So this, we'll call it cost-neutral, Andrew, statement, is that realized immediately? I mean, obviously not immediately, but when the structure is in place and decisions are higher, are we talking, you know, year one, or is this something that's realized over a course of a period of time?
No, it's realized in year one. If this were to be put in place for FY '20, which is this coming school year, next school year, it would, it would be in place then. What I think is important to factor into this whole conversation is that, you know, we, we made it a goal for the system to look at our efficiencies and effectiveness, not just being efficient for the sake of being efficient, but being effective as well. And I think what this model provides for is that without that administrative support, that administrative expertise in special education, there are so many potential missteps. There's so many opportunities for us to make mistakes and perhaps not make the right decisions about what program to develop, or to be, with always with good intent, but to not be as thoughtful about how we establish programs. For example, I think that the data will show eventually, because I've seen it, that we have a large number of students currently outplaced for significant emotional issues. And perhaps we should have had a program for students with those kinds of issues as opposed to a life skills program. Not to say that a life skills program is not a valid, worthwhile program, but without that really close to the issues oversight, we, we might miss things like that. And so I think that's part of what the rationale is for having some kind of administrative oversight and consistency of team chairs between Pine Hill and Pickering and between the middle and the high school. Let's remember, transitioning from the middle to the high school is a challenging stretch. And transitioning from the elementaries to the middle school is a challenging stretch. But knowing, being the team chair potentially of the middle and high school helps you to know the full sequence and be more associated with the full sequence. So I think a lot of what this is aimed at doing is addressing, in fact, some of our big goals. But with that said, I, I've been around schools for over 30 years and I can tell you, there is no perfect special education model. It's a really complex field. It is complex. Our teachers know firsthand. They know how complicated the issues can be. And there are times when I remember as a special educator myself, I just wish I could have an administrator I could talk to about my issue, but the principal wasn't going to be familiar with what I was dealing with. And it wasn't through any fault of their own, just that wasn't their specialty. And that happens a lot in special ed as a special ed teacher. This tries to speak to that.
I'm going to just quickly change briefly. We asked for community comments before we even started discussing, and I recognize that. So to be a little bit out of the norm, if there's anyone in the audience that has a couple of questions, I would be willing to entertain for a few minutes.
Do we have time? Because I still have more. Maggie had one.
Let's move back. No, 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 this isn't breaking the action. So I'm, we'll come back, so please, break down your comments.
It's been a minute since it started.
Excuse me, Pine Hill Special Ed, just a clarifying question. Am I understanding the description that I saw there, that there would be one team chair per elementary school? Or one shared between?
One shared between and one full-time, and one administrator. So 2.0 FTEs. One would be the coordinator and one would be the team chair. And, and both could support both the IP process. The coordinator could also support kind of some of the administrative decision-making and, and, you know, case management and all of that.
Dorothy, can I ask a follow-up to that? So do you see this person in that coordinator role taking on, for example, the kind of high-profile cases, the really loaded issues?
Absolutely. I mean, again, you know, I think as a, you know... I mean, again, you know, I think as a, you know, as a group, you should say, where should this coordinator spend their time? Should it be chairing all the initial evaluations? Because there are, the district does do a lot of initial evaluations that result in a finding of no special needs, which is, you know, somewhat unusual. And could, understanding why would be important. But what if the coordinator did all of the initials and the team chair did all the reevals and then some of the difficult cases got divided up? The coordinator would definitely be doing, you know, some of that basic IEP management, but also would be an administrator who had the training and the experience to do some of the more instructional and collaborative leadership skills that we talked about, kind of what we felt was missing in the, you know, in this current model. Just because one person couldn't get to every building, yeah.
Did that answer you?
No, I, yes, I think it does. So, we're talking about two people instead of, that would be shared between the two elementary schools. No team chair?
No, a team chair.
And no team chair. And these two people would be housed at one elementary school or another? Or as a special educator, how would I access them?
Well, we're saying there is a team chair and a coordinator. One person is an administrator, and one person is a team chair.
Where do they live?
Where do they live?
I think physically that's up to you guys.
To what district is?
You know, I mean, it's, I, it, you know, they could be physically half-time in each building, or, you know, and the same with the team chair. It's, you know, I, what, the idea of having one in each building kind of continues what, what, one of the things that we were trying to kind of support change in, which was more kind of both collaborative practice, sharing of best practice, and alignment of the IEP process of the, of the two schools, which granted are two different districts, but, you know, there should be some opportunities for some, some shared, you know, problem-solving practice and aligning of IEP process. And that's the reason that the people would be shared, not have one in one building and one in the other. You know, the goal is to have, have two people become knowledgeable about the cultures, the programs, and the processes of both schools.
I mean, those are details that, you know, once the structure's there, they can...
Yes, yes, yeah. And it's a change.
Yes.
Just to kind of piggyback from Claire, I kind of agree that you said it's kind of hard to kind of see all of this.
Can you guys just, when you speak from the committee, can you identify your name and your role and who you are, just for the record and for us to know? Thank you.
Amanda Rogers, the middle school, language-based programming. So, Claire had mentioned how it's kind of hard to see this and have a lot of confidence in this moving forward without kind of hearing a lot more of the January meeting that'd be coming up with details of programming and things. My question is more in regard to the, where you had said, Andrew, and brought up the budgeting piece, or how it was, what did you guys call it, like a even slate type of cost?
Budget neutral.
Thank you, budget neutral. Is that also including the idea of this programming changing? Or is it just the oversight of the administrative structure? Because I think those are two very, as Claire said, like one kind of depends on the other.
So, that's, that is a really good question about the, if you guys want to answer it, that's fine, I don't mind answering it with regard to the budget. Because what, what we heard and hence envisioned was this, this Director of Student Services and Coordinator, as Dorsey mentioned, doing a strategic plan. So not jumping in next year with changes to programming in September, because that's, that's not a healthy process. But actually looking at these findings and working with the new people to see if there are places that we could or need to adjust our programming. So I don't think that in January you'd hear recommendations for changes to our programs. I think what you'll hear is places where, am I wrong about that?
No, I think, the, the answer to your first question is that this, it's the administrative model that is budget neutral, that changes, you know, just for the administrative model. The, the question is, how do you assess the, the needs, identify the areas that need more support, identify the areas that could be done more efficiently, and thereby create some resources in a timely way for this year's budget process, particularly when you're going to have a whole new leadership come in. So the goal would be to begin some of that work and with the new leaders, expect that there will be some, some recommendations about programming, but because of the way the schools do their budget, it won't be in time for this year's budget process. Not that they won't happen, but, but it probably will be rolled out by the, by the new leadership.
Can I ask a finance question related to that? So, we've engaged two, you know, experienced, knowledgeable experts who have done some work and some research. And if I'm hearing correctly, we might vote to hire someone, and they're not going to be hired to the following September, and then we're going to wait for a plan. And I know, Andrew, you've heard this from me before, like, oh my God, here we go, we're waiting again. Is there a way to work with Dorsey and Denise, with the information that we have and the knowledge we have, to do some preliminary work, to say, these are our strategic issues? So we're not hiring someone who then is starting with a blank sheet of paper or information that's 18 months old?
So, on the finance end of that, so, we, no, we don't, if we were, if we were to successfully adopt this model, or even any kind of alternative model, our hope would be that we could hire the Director of that this January or February, just because we know how hard it is to find people. And if you wait until, until May or June, you're in a really tough spot. So, that, that was kind of the rationale for putting this forward as early as it did, because we, we would like to know if we have the approval of the school committees to move forward with this idea in principle. Because, and the fact that it is budget neutral, we wouldn't expect it to be something that it would have to impact your budgets. So, but the question is, what would that person do when they were hired? And hopefully, what they would do is they would work with our interim Director of Special Ed to make sure that the roles and responsibilities are really clearly defined, and so that when the thing hits the ground, people know what they're supposed to be doing, A. B, begin to look at the programming presentation recommendations from Dorsey and Debbie in January to, to, that'll come out in January, to see what things are, things that we can do now, and what things do we have to plan for. But I do think what Dorsey said is important, that they may very well, in fact, find, we do need more programming. And that could be not budget neutral, but it wouldn't be in this existing budget.
And this is budget neutral because we're hiring somebody in January at the same time we're paying an intern?
No, hiring for next year, for June 30th, or July 1st.
Right, so they're not going to start work till July 1st?
Right.
Right.
So the interim is in place until July 1st, and then a new person will take it.
So, no strategic work is going to be done until July 1st?
Well, I mean, I started my work before July 1st. You can still work with the existing person to start on some of that. And that's part of what we're asking Debbie to do, which is why Debbie's been involved in the conversations with Dorsey and Debbie Levine, so that she's aware of what the programming recommendations are. But, you know, changes to any kind of program, they take a while, you, especially because of budget cycles. I mean, it's really taken us, it's taken us a full year to get into the strategic plan. Last year was my first year, if you can believe that.
Seems like ten.
Quickly, I'm gonna, just to keep this moving a little bit, Maggie, I know you had a question.
It's okay, this conversation has gone in a different direction, so I'm gonna hold my question for a period of time. Thank you.
For another meeting or for this meeting?
No, I'm just waiting to see where the conversation's going. Thanks.
Can I follow up on something? And, I'm sorry, I am the newest member on my clan. And there's something that you just mentioned, and something that I read in this report that gave me pause, which is the percentage of students who are referred to see if they needed an IEP and then found that they didn't. And I noticed that the data here was just for this past school year. Did, have you taken a look at the data from, from a long time, you know, from years before this year?
That is an excellent question, and the answer is no, and in part, it's because that data is very hard to retrieve. One of the things that we found was, you know, with multiple leadership changes and with different ways that people kept records, it's hard to go back and get that historical data, although I think with some digging, we definitely could, or they could at the building level, and that would be very good to look at.
Yeah, and the reason that I say that is that we have had multiple changes in the, in how the program has been administered over recent years.
Right, right.
And, but we have many people who are in this room, who've been here for quite a while. And, and so, from, looking from one year, I don't know, that doesn't tell me anything. That doesn't tell me we're not doing well in that area. I mean, tells me that, it could tell me that that year was an aberration. It could tell me a lot of things, but it really doesn't, so I guess, I guess what I'm, I'm saying is, if we're going to use that, we might want to try to...
Get historical data, absolutely.
No, particularly for the process that's going to come after this. You know, I don't think that that really impacts on the issue of, do we need a Director of Student Services? But when we start to look at our program, do that deep dive, you know, and this isn't for me, I'm gonna be, you know, I'm getting to do a lot of other things. But for, for professionals, who are the experts, and, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, and wherever we could get five-year data, you can see it's in there. Wherever we could get five-year data, it's included. And I completely agree with you that, you know, trend data is much more, more revealing.
Yeah.
But, again, in part because of some of the changes, you know, some of this might involve literally going back and going through records as opposed to how people kept records. Now, some records are immaculate and some are, you know, it varied, but, and, and some of it, quite frankly, is that you should be able to get this from the IEP software, the, the computer program, and that proved difficult as well. So we're, we will, we will pursue that. But I totally agree with you. The one thing that is interesting is that that, even as an aberration year, that's a, that's a fairly, more than fairly high, that's a significantly high number of evaluations that resulted in a finding of no special needs.
Even in a district like ours where a parent knows?
Yeah, yeah.
They can, yeah, yeah.
Because when you think of an evaluation, takes about 20 hours.
Yeah, I know, and that, and to me...
It's a lot of time.
Well, and my question, being a neophyte, is, is that time that's spent by our staff?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
I mean, I assumed it was, but I didn't...
Educational settings. I mean, you're taking the students out of a learning environment.
Yes, that I get.
So the students are, are missing instruction, the staff is, is doing the testing.
And I'm sure they're writing reports at home.
Anecdotally, anecdotally, do you have any information about, that might tell us where we were before this year, that year?
No.
Okay.
I just, I want to ask a couple of questions. One is quick, clarifying question on the issue of why it was so difficult to get historical data, to these question. Is it that there's a problem with the actual software or with the folks using the software and putting the data into the software that we can then pull out? The, the, should we buy another computer program, or we need to all just...
No, no, you do not buy another computer program.
Well, then a lot of changes.
Very well, I don't, we don't need to dig further, I just, people need to put it in the folder, or you can't buy another computer program.
And quite frankly, the software is not designed to yield the kind of longitudinal data that we're looking for. So, one of our recommendations is, you know, if you decide this is something you want to pay attention to, start right now, getting the benchmark data, your benchmark data, baseline data for your benchmarks, I'll get it right in a minute, right? Start right, benchmark is a good word. And, and your team chairs will gather that in a heartbeat and keep it for you.
Easy to do it along the way.
It depends on what they have been asked in the past to gather. And since it's hard to retrieve from the software, it has nothing to do with the skillfulness of your team chair.
Yeah, no, I understand.
You know, but, but if that's what you want to look at, start now, and, and go forward and, and keep an independent record of it, because, because the reports that are generated from the IEP software do a different kind of thing.
And they're not really designed to create these kind of reports, is what I'm understanding. Okay, thank you.
And did you have another question?
Oh, I did. And then, yes, I did. Sorry. Is it, it was not specified in this report nor did it come in, but I am sort of hoping, would services such as ELL also fall, like where are they currently, like ELL, for example? Where's that currently, who's in charge of that right now? And would that also fall under the Student Services?
It's actually there.
And so, would you anticipate that also falling?
Not necessarily. ELL is very, and we talked about it, but ELL is, is viewed as a general education instructional support, and I think can be supported either by your Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction or your Student Services person. We wanted to protect the time with the Student Services person and give them only those responsibilities that we thought really would support the needs of the at-risk learners that we felt needed a coordinated support. So it was a thoughtful decision not to include ELL. It is, and it shouldn't be.
Okay, thank you.
It was in the first draft.
Yeah, no, it's in the top line.
So just to clarify on that, we actually really talked about that a lot.
Okay.
What we thought was, would be wiser is to move the 504 process into the Student Services, which is also overseen by the Assistant Superintendent, so that the person who's overseeing the 504 process is associated with the special education program that 504s, when unsuccessful, lead to. So, that's hugely important, because that actually could account for that high number, for example, of referrals, if your 504 process is not strong and clearly delineated and all of your folks understand the 504 process, which is tricky, that's not that easy. It's really hard to define, like, so, okay, wait a second, the person doesn't have a disability, but they do have a disability? That's hard, and that's why that oversight needs to be consistent, because that could have a huge impact on the number of kids who eventually go into the IEP process. And I've seen when that's contained and cleaned up, the difference exists. So we thought that it belonged under the Director of Student Services and that the ELL deserved to be, remain with the Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you.
Good.
Yeah, I mean, I could go on all day, but there's the table, so.
And did you have a...
I'm all night.
I do. I understand the need district-wide, and it's been shared multiple times in different ways, of both horizontal and vertical alignment...
of both horizontal and vertical alignment. But I'd love, I'd like for you to share a little bit more with the picture of, you've mentioned the need for building leadership. How does that look when there's not actually people residing in the buildings? I'm sort of confused, which is sort of what you were saying. I'm clarifying that. I still don't understand how that quite looks. Yeah.
Yeah, I think we're saying we're not exactly sure whether they have, I mean, that's a district decision, but they would be in the buildings. I see them in, in the buildings.
Two buildings.
Right. But it may be half-time. But it can't be just one person in one building and one in the other. There needs to be.
But then, if the need though is in for, you mean, for building leadership, your definition of building leadership is not leadership within the building, really. It's for, can you define it then?
Yes. It is, it is clarity of who has responsibility to make the decision, to be there when needed, to do the instructional leadership, to work with the principal to say, you know what? We're looking at what's going on in our building. We would like to collaboratively together do some training around this particular disability type because we're finding that both the special education and general education teachers would be better served by that. And also, anybody who's a direct service provider, if they have a question, they pick up the phone and call and that person answers it. Because physically, they could be in the building or they could be a phone call away. It is, it's the, it's their go-to person for problem solving, for instructional questions. And our feeling was, you know, we basically doubled the, the FTEs so that that person should be, you know, twice as available as they were in the previous model. And, and so physically, they may be back and forth in both buildings, but that doesn't mean that if it's Tuesday and I'm at Pine Hill, I can't answer a question, you know, in Dover. And, and that would be that person's role, is, you know, I'm your go-to person. I'll physically be there when you need me. I'll physically be there on scheduled times, but, you know, I'm, I'm gonna be the, the person that helps you, you know, kind of make your job work.
So that's at the elementary schools. And with those region, it's now being divided by three people?
Well, at the region, the, the Director of Student Services would be that administrative person, and then the team chair positions would be, would be, what, what we envisioned was six through nine or, or 10, depending on the caseload size. But at least six through nine for one person who's full-time to facilitate that transition from eighth to ninth. And then the team chair, the rest of it be, you know, supported by the, you know, the, the remaining staff, whether it's, you know, some, some work with the director or, and some work with the out-of-district coordinator. So.
It's important to have that coordination between, for transition between middle and high school.
That makes sense.
But again, yeah, I mean, these people are gonna have to be in more than one place. That, that is part of this model.
Which is part of the problem, I understand. It just needed to then, because you kept saying that we needed the building leadership, and so that's why, it's like, not really at the building. So we're redefining that, which is fine.
Right. And, and also the collaborative leadership of the principals. I mean, the other thing is, you know, it, one of the things that this person can do is really be more available to the principals. Because the real building leadership is the principal. And they're, they have and will continue to have an enormous role in the way special education and all the other support services are implemented in their building. So there'll be that kind of collegial opportunity too. But the principals, you know, still will have a, a huge role in the support of all of the, of the support services.
Clarify this one, Anne. We have a question in the back, yes?
I have a parent of a child who's in the special education system. And I guess I'd like to express concern or just even clarify further how it could work. I've been through all of the different models over the past however many years. And I guess not having a team chair at each one of the locations, and I understand you said that they'll be going back and forth and, and all of that. That, to me, as a parent who would like to access those people or also concerns with the staff who also need to access those people, it sounds like a logistical nightmare, just as far as where do you reach them when they have to be on-call almost to both of the schools at the elementary level?
I should ask that question.
I guess I'd look for some clarification on how you would see that working and how the staff would be supported by them more than they are now.
Some of this, I think, is wrapping your head around a change in structure, although you have the same amount of support available. It's, it's delivered differently. And this is where the transition, because of the regional model, is a little bit different. I mean, you know, historically, when I was, when I was the Director of Student Services in Wellesley, there was an administrator of special education in Dover and one in Sherburne and one for the region, and I knew them all very well. And I think it, it feels very different to have not that person right in the building for you to go to. It is not, I can tell you from experience that the administrative load of supporting the two schools is something, given the, given the team chair role as well, something that two people can do well. It's, it's gonna be a change for the person not to be there every day, but, you know, for someone to have to pick up the telephone. But I don't see it as a logistical nightmare. I mean, the team meetings can be scheduled in block times that you know the person is gonna be there. And anything that happens that is unexpected or needs their help, they literally are a phone call away. It is a model that is much more typical of a district that's not a regional. You know, to have, have people that share buildings. And, and I can tell you from experience, it works. It feels very different here because you have had, traditionally had the people based in your buildings because of the regional structure.
Not always.
And I, and I get that.
We've gone back and forth over the river before.
It didn't work.
Can I add just quickly to that? One of the things that I heard was a concern was that our current model, our team chairs are teachers. They're not administrators. So you might have a pressing issue, but if you call the team chair, they don't have the authority to make a decision. This would allow for the authority to be close because that authority is for the elementary level only. And I would agree that I've seen these models where they span more than two schools, like three or four.
I shared a team chair when I was at the high school with the middle school. She worked half-time at the middle school, half-time at the high school, large buildings. And I will say, the, the benefits from it were the, the transition process changed. You know, she knew everybody that was coming up. The families knew her already. But yes, she had, she had a very complete schedule. And if she needed to change it, she did, and she was very reachable.
The one thing I'd like to say is that with every one of the different administration changes, we've heard that same benefit. That every single time there has been an administration change, it's, well, the transition, it will help with transition, it will help with transition. We just, I don't feel like we're getting there.
Yeah. Thank you.
And my comment, Henry, was just gonna be, we need to use technology, right? We, we need to Skype or whatever the district's technology is. You can reach anyone by phone. You can book a meeting on Outlook. You can, you know, be in one place and communicate with someone or a whole team in another building. So there's ways to make it feel like it does today and still not be in the same place. Yeah, and just, I, I have a question, but to follow up on that. The workplace isn't building-based anymore. You know, I mean, everybody, in, in corporate America, most people aren't in the same building with the, many people aren't in the same building with their boss. But my question, and again, if this is a neophyte question, I'm sorry. Who, do you know who currently is the, and I hate using the word boss, but who is the supervisor or the boss of the, the special education teachers at the region? And will that change under this new structure? Because, and I could be completely wrong, and if I am, feel free to tell me. It would seem that if there is a supervisory relationship, there might be more buy-in in terms of assisting with, I don't know. That, the cry that we have, it seems, for building-based support? Who, who does that now and what, how will it change?
For the most part, it is the principals. The principals and the headmasters and assistant headmasters.
Today.
Today.
Is that a risk? The layer of structure today, is that a risk?
A risk in what way?
In terms of decisions that are made that might not be.
I think, I, I think your team chairs are very skillful at saying, no, we gotta, we gotta check with the special ed administrator. So I, I don't think you're teetering on the edge of anything because you have very skillful people who are saying, no, this one is a technical decision. We're gonna be in touch with our, you know, with our Director of Special Education. And, and I will say that the building-based principals do, you know, have done a wonderful job getting into the trenches and, and supporting staff. And at the, at the region, so have the assistant headmasters. They've been, they've been, you know, they've been very involved. We envision that this could now become more of a shared responsibility. It's not possible for, for the, this, these two administrative positions to just take over the supervision and evaluation of everybody in the department. But they could collaborate much more closely with the building principals and perhaps take over the supervision and evaluation of, you know, individuals if that was, you know, if that was seen as, as a, you know, an effective use of their time. But it would be cooperative.
And I'm, I'm more interested in the support aspect.
Yes, yes.
Because, because they're subject matter experts in special education as opposed to, and I love all of the leaders in both of the middle school and the high school, okay? But they've got a lot on their plates and they are not subject matter experts in this area.
Right.
So I think we should, again, start to wrap this up a little bit. Thinking more, a couple more questions. Thinking more about structure, not necessarily process and how things are gonna get rolled out would be a nice way to focus because that's what you're recommending and we're talking more about. So I think we should just have a couple more and then we're gonna move on. We've got a big agenda, yes?
So this is, is going to be to, I guess, in supportive table. But I have a, a couple of questions. One with respect to, to the extent this proposal is, is budget, well, actually, the first question is, would the, would the background or experience of the Director of Student Services be different? And I don't know, I'll direct it to each of you and to Debbie. Would be different than the background and experience of Director of Special Education? I believe you've served in both roles in your last student services, correct?
I've been a Director of People Personnel Services, which is another name for Director of Student Services in my past three districts.
So is it.
And it was, the requirement is having an administrator of special ed license. And then other experiences with guidance and counseling and nursing and 504s.
So would we be looking for somebody different if it were Director of Student Services versus Director of Special Education?
Different than the special ed now or different than what Debbie's done?
Different structure. So I'm thinking, is, is there, is there a need to make a, a decision now or in the next month or in the next two months in the hiring process of, of the next person who's going to sit in this seat, whether it's a Director of Student Services or a Director of Special Education? Particularly if the overall impact would be budget-neutral, is there, is there a timing issue? Because it, to me, it just feels like there's, there are a lot of questions. There are a lot of things. I mean, this, this very well may be a terrific fit. And it seems like we've been, it's a little bit like we've been way on the, the decentralized side, way on the centralized side, and this is kind of striking a balance. But there's a lot that feels like needs to be, you know, meat put on the bones. And is there, what's the urgency for doing it, you know, for, for acting on anything now?
So we were, we were constrained by our, our schedules of joint meetings. Not fully constrained, because we could always flop a meeting in. But we try to honor the schedule that's built so that people can plan accordingly. And we had a meeting scheduled for October and we had a meeting scheduled for January 8th.
No, the 3rd, I can change.
3rd, we can change. So.
It's January 12th.
January 15th.
January 15th. So knowing that that was the case, these were the two opportunities to have the joint committees together. And knowing that going out looking for a Director of Student Services or a Director of Special Education for that matter, given the size of the pools, the earlier, the better. So what our hope was, was to get this model established of a Director of Student Services soon enough. That I, I do think one of the challenges is it would be, I guess it isn't actually because it would be budget-neutral. I was thinking that you couldn't actually hire that person until the budget was approved in the spring, but you could because the funding is already there. So you'd be able to, we would be able to get that process rolling sooner rather than later. If we wait until January 23rd, our next January 23rd meeting to, to establish this, we're getting out of the gates late because by the time we get this thing rolling, there'll be, I guarantee, other systems ahead of us. And we, I, by the way, I do think this is a more attractive position than a K-12 Special Education Director. Much more attractive. Because you know you have some administrative support at the entire elementary level. That's a big deal. That's a much more attractive position. So we'd want that to be out there pretty quickly. So that is a consideration. That's not to say that you have to make a decision tonight. We did not, we arrengely did not include action required. So I understand your concern about that. We could reconvene the joint committee to, to come back to this if, if that's helpful.
So the, the process, the, I understood that the hiring process would start in late February-ish. So would there.
I'd rather start it in late December-ish.
Got it.
I, I, actually, I mean, Debbie, you, you probably know better than I when special ed directors or directors of student services would be more apt to be considering it. Is there a timeframe? Is there, is there, is there any advantage to being earlier versus later?
I think there's always an advantage to being earlier, absolutely.
That's my thinking.
January, February timeframe.
Yes.
I'm hearing a lot about the need for stability. And I wonder, you talked at the very beginning about visioning to identify where we are and where we wanna be and what our goals are. Is it necessary to have a new administrative structure in place to do that work? Or should we spend more time on the visioning upfront so we have a better sense of what our goals are and then what our needs are, and then build an administrative structure that makes sense and sort of grows organically out of that process, which I feel like you made a great start at? But I feel like there's a lot of work and a lot of wisdom to capture.
I mean, my feeling is it's gonna slow the whole process down because your structure right now doesn't have the supports that's needed. So if you wait another year and start to figure that out and then wait another year, those are a lot of, it's a lot of time.
But I think my recommendation was let's try and do some strategy work before this person starts. Oh, I think it can be. But as far as budget-neutral, can we also learn what it is per district? So that's a three-district budget-neutral? That may be totally different district by district? I have no idea.
Yeah, there's, there's no district that would have any increase.
Based, based on this.
Based on this.
There, there are going to be other things added to the budget based on programming and changing and whatever.
Just based on this.
And that's why I think if we could start the strategy piece of it much sooner.
My understanding, and, and thank you for this work. I, I really appreciate all the, the deep dive into our system and the fact that the things that you have identified that we could really use some support around, the instructional leadership, resource management, the collaboration between leadership and between the 504 process and the IEP process, all are totally in line with our, our district-wide goal. all are totally in line with our, our district-wide goals of ASIL. We're really, and it, it feels like it supports it well. Couple of questions about that. Do you feel like there is any information that you would rather, you would need to be able to support this recommendation? Do you feel like this is the recommendation? You have enough information? Like you don't need the extra four years for, you know, the chart for the IEPs that were rejected? Or would you rather have, you know, more cohorts of parents that you feel like would need to weigh in for some of the... What Claire was talking about is some of the deeper dive with the district, with the programming. What, is there anything missing from what you were able to dive into over the last six months or so? And you're feeling comfortable that you know our district and that these are the identified goals? And is there anything else that you feel like you really would wish you had another two or three months to get at?
The, um, the historical data would, would be helpful in thinking about programmatic issues. I think, you know, really understanding, is there an, is there an issue here? Was this a blip? Is this another, another piece of evidence around the need for stronger general ed, special ed collaboration? Or was it just a blip? But I don't think it changes the organizational structure. So, you know, the, the, you know, for this recommendation, I feel like we, we will have some more questions for kind of a, a deeper look at program needs. But for this recommendation, I think we, you know, we have sufficient information.
Another follow-up with Andrew's question. So initially, when we were thinking about this, it's, you know, we had so many difficulties in hiring the right person. And this is apparently, from what I understand, this is what all the other districts are doing. And is that easier position to hire? This is more common a role these days as opposed to the administrator of special ed?
This is a more typical role.
This is a typical. So do you foresee any issues with us having, being able to capture the right person based on, you know, my issue frankly is high school and middle school. They, you know, that's gonna be a big task to manage the special ed piece for that in addition to the others. You think that we won't have much of a problem being able to find the right person and not having to go to an interim for a couple of years?
You know, my feeling is the, the earlier you can start, the better. But, and, and, you know, I wish I could say absolutely. Certainly, I think this is, this is an attractive set of districts within which to work. The staff is very talented. You know, I, I think finding the right person is, you know, can always be a challenge. But, but I think if you were looking in April and May, it would be much harder than if you were looking in January and February.
It's also appealing that middle and high schools, if there's someone that really knows that with the transition plan and look over into all of that, that's very appealing and not having that elementary piece.
Yeah.
But again, the sooner you start, then people start. I know people look in, starting to think about it now. So it is the time now, if they're planning on moving on. Because they wanna let their districts know.
I'm sorry, can I have one more final?
Yes.
Okay. And then that January piece, exactly. You're still gonna be continuing to do your work up until January. We are gonna get a fuller rollout in January. And that's gonna address the, the deeper dive into the programming specifically.
It's too much for...
Right, okay.
All right. I don't know if we can finish our recommendation, rather than we can just move on to the next agenda item. There's nothing else actually required.
We have a few comments.
Yes.
I just have one question more on the, I'm Mary Weatherbury from the life skills teacher at the high school. On the, the kind of the, the team chair being, you said six to nine? And it says in the report sort of seven to 10.
Yeah.
And so I guess my question is, who would be that sort of support person for the 10 to age 22 up at the high school? Would that fall on the director of student services? Especially as in the last couple of years since our newest programs have been at the high school?
Yes, and, and in part perhaps only on the, the out-of-district coordinator whom we were hoping will be able to take, oh, you know, we were anticipating will be able to do more of a team chair role at the high school. So those, yes. In the upper levels. Both, both of those people, yeah.
Is the out-of-district coordinator still responsible for K-12 or K-20?
Yes, yeah.
Pre-K-12.
All right. Appreciate all the comments. I think we all do, and questions. There's definitely, I think, definitely a little bit more work to be done, Andrew. So I would like to either schedule this for a meeting that would pop up in the middle of the agenda or the middle of the schedule or go into January for the next one. But we can discuss that.
The chairs.
You okay?
The chairs want that.
Yeah, good? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can we just do, socks are up to zip?
Absolutely. On other important items.
Yeah, yeah. The socks are up to zip. Bottom of the order is first. Not that we're watching. Good to know.
All right, I'm gonna ask a question to the committee and get a pulse, okay? There's a couple of items on the agenda. Then I think we can take either to individual meetings. For example, the superintendent goal review. And we'll put a little bit more emphasis on Andrew to have to do it three different times. But he's more than willing to spend more time with us. I do believe, I'm, I'm not giving you what I think you should do. I'm offering him for this quick discussion. We should probably talk about the revision of the year one evaluation protocol pilot, because that is an action requested, required. And then if you would like, I'll leave this up to you for the strategic plan, action plan. Do you wanna give an update on that? But I, unless everyone wants to keep driving through the end of the agenda, I think we can punt the superintendent goal review to individual meetings.
I think we used a lot of bandwidth tonight. So I think that, from my perspective, the, I don't... The reason I'm not feeling a sense of urgency to share the action plan with you is because I know you can all read. You've seen what we've written. And hopefully you see it's consistent with the work that we're doing. So I don't feel like I'm rolling out some new thing to all of you. But at the same time, I don't mind providing the committee members with an opportunity to ask questions about it. And whether you wanna do that tonight or in the individual meetings, I could leave completely up to you. The same thing holds true with the superintendent goals, which hopefully you're seeing the same link that I am between that and the strategic plan. So I don't think those are, are huge items. It depends on how you guys are feeling at this point. I do feel we need to take care of the QPO issue.
And I wanna ask you, Claire, are we doing anything we shouldn't be doing with changing the agenda?
No, that's fine. You just, normally you say that at the beginning, but that's fine. And, you know, we have the little barb at the bottom. We can change it as we go, as needed. My thought on just, if we're punting something to the individual meetings, we lose the benefit of hearing everybody else's questions. So if we could do it and we do it briefly tonight and then if there's more detailed questions, you know, follow-up at individual meetings? And if there's anything significant that chairs can share?
I don't know if it's even my place, but...
It's always your...
Okay. But I...
We're, we're a committee of 16.
I know. And as much as I, I hate to suggest that we need to spend more quality time with one another, I do feel that we do, we've, we've desired, I think, as a group, to deliberate rather than take any action on the proposals that we heard tonight. I hear, I see an, an interest in the part of school administration that we do take some actions so that they can, in a timely fashion, post either the jobs that they are supporting or other jobs. And I, I feel like we need, I want us to give them direction on that before we meet on January 15th. I do. So I feel like there might be a need for us to all come together around the holiday times.
I'll bring candy canes.
Great.
Chocolate kisses.
Gelt the whole shebang. But we, I think we need to meet again before then if we want to make any progress or however we desire to go in that direction.
Can I suggest that, I, I believe you, you mentioned that you're gonna have some kind of office hours available?
Yes.
So perhaps...
Did Cheryl pick you guys yet?
No, I haven't seen that yet. But perhaps...
The plan was for next Wednesday, 1:00 to 4:00. And it just may have slid off her radar. But that was the plan, that I was gonna open up office hours. Because I said I would do that quarterly.
Is that a useful time for you to, to collect some information? That maybe we can get a little bit of a head start on that coming together? At least you can get some, some, I think what...
Michael, what is that?
On the...
The office hours.
Oh, that's right. Andrew's just gonna have some time available. So essentially, we had some feedback last year. People wanted to be sure that committee members could come and see me if they wanted to. And so we set up a window of time for committee members that could drop in. So I don't know if that would be effective for that particular model that you're proposing? Because I think then in that 1:00 to 4:00 hour window, we could conceivably have 16 slots. And that's never gonna work. What we're banking on in that 1:00 to 4:00 hour window is that there aren't that many people who have questions or concerns. So I think that's a, that would be a tricky...
We're just blocking off that time to do something else, actually.
I'm putting a fire in the fireplace.
What I would like to see is that, is that some work could be done offline between now and that next meeting in kind of further understanding and digesting.
For sure. Except I'm also trying to be honest, like honest about our open meeting issues and that it's hard to have, we can't really deliberate over stuff except when we're here in session.
Although information could be sent out and sent in.
Could we share our concerns with our chairs? They can meet with Andrew and plan what information would be presented to everyone when we meet again in December.
Sure.
And we can, the region meets in December, but neither Sherburne nor Dover does. So we could add it, although it's the first pass of our budget. It would suck for us.
Great information for everyone to hear.
But what's the date of that? Potentially December 4th.
Yep.
My birthday.
Happy birthday.
Yay.
So that would be a great date to do.
Potentially, yeah. Would that be, I know that's not ideal.
Yeah, no, the first pass of the budget is really not, it's really the first pass of the budget. I mean, that would be too nitty-gritty, you know?
No, it's the January meeting, right?
So then that may be something that would...
I think that would work.
All right.
So just so I clear, you're suggesting doing a joint meeting after the December 4 regional meeting or before? Or is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah, maybe before.
Yeah.
What time is the regional?
So it's a...
To be determined.
All right. Yeah, why don't we call one of the individual committees?
Let's find out how many, how many challenging, you know, issues or requests are brought forward. If it's a three-hour presentation, then we've got a problem. That doesn't mean we can't ask you questions or ask for more information. I'm just saying that we'll have to assess how much people are asking for and then determine which makes sense to go first. It might be just a couple of clarifying questions. I need some clarity around this if we're going to the director of student services model. Because that's really de facto what we're asking. It's about going to the director of student services model. So you might have clarifying questions or concerns that you want me to address in, in further detail. I mean, that's no problem. I could've done that tonight, but I really didn't feel like it was totally appropriate.
Too much.
It was too much, too much. There was a, this is a lot, right? And not underestimating how big a question this is for you guys. And we spent a lot of time talking about it.
Yeah. To your point, Claire, we can do the strategic action plan, plan, whatever you call it. There's no action required for an update. And then from there, we can go on to the evaluation protocol pilot.
Sure.
And then I think at that point, we might wanna adjourn.
Could we flip those around? If our case we, we wanna return after the pilot of the strategic action?
Okay, that too. All right, great. We're gonna do, we're doing the evaluation protocol pilot first.
Okay, so, as you know, I'm gonna lean pretty heavily on Ms. McCoy for clarification of anything I'm missing. But we have currently a supervision and evaluation handbook.
No, it's, it's part of the contract. It is...
It's actually not written into the contract.
It's not written in the contract. It's referred to as the, in the contract.
The supervision handbook is referred to in the contract.
Yes, I believe it is.
Yes, that is true. You're right about that.
So it is part of the contract and it's a negotiated item.
Okay, fair enough. So, um, within that handbook, um, there is a, a practice in place for qualified peer observers. It was put in place at the time when the state, you'll recall, the state was asking, putting a lot of pressure on schools to use student data, student feedback, parent feedback. This was all up in the air, district-determined measures, DDMs. Those of you who remember those conversations. It was a lot of work and then they backed off. But in that process, we at Dover Sherburne made a decision to include in our supervisory cycle an option for teachers to do in year one, if they were a PTS teacher. That means a defective, old-term, tenured teacher. If they were a tenured teacher in year one, they used to, we've, in the most recent years, done this QPO, this qualified peer observer model. And the, the qualified peer observer model also includes a stipend for the person who's the qualified peer observer. It includes training for the person to become a qualified peer observer. And there's an option for a person not to participate in the qualified peer observer. And they just get traditional observations six times.
By the principal.
The principal. So what, the, the proposal that we're requesting be considered is in fact to not use the QPO model for this year, but instead go back to the action research model, which is the model that you had before you put in the qualified peer observer model. Is that correct?
So I don't think, Andrew, the qualified peer, and this is how I'm gonna get my head around agreeing to this, is part of the super, the teacher evaluation.
I think it was an addendum.
It was an addendum, but it was never voted on, except...
It's not an addendum to it though, because it's never been voted on. So it means it's not attached to it. It was presented to us separately as a separate individual program that would be funded through, a stipend through ACAD. But it never made it into the negotiated...
Document.
Document.
Correct, it did not.
It did not. So while it's listed on the webpage as number four under evaluation, it really is not number four under evaluation. It's its own thing. So that's how I'm getting myself around. We're gonna be able to change it and agree it without an MOU, without negotiation, without...
Can you, just from, I'm sorry, can you repeat that just one more time? So it sinks in with me.
I follow it.
I know. So I'm talking shorthand, right?
No, that's your...
It's not part of the bargaining agreement.
I'll back that.
Is that what you're talking about?
We have, we have an educator's agreement, which is essentially the teacher's contract. That contract refers to the superintendent, the teacher's evaluation protocol and procedures. In 2013, there was an MOU to revise that. You can all find this under the school committee stuff on the website. And that went to the state frameworks and how we were going. And that work was done prior to state legislation about teacher evaluations. Years go by, under Steve Bliss, there was the proposal for qualified peer observers, which is what's before us tonight and being modified. That was presented to school committees and to the teachers, not as something that's part of the evaluation process, that's part of the contract, just as a separate thing. Like if someone was bringing, I wanna serve green milk at lunch. You know, it's just a separate...
And it's an option that they could do?
Right, right.
In addition to...
Also, it was voluntary, so that's why it didn't have to be part of the agreement? That is, someone could choose to use it? A teacher could choose to be...
It wasn't tied to that information.
And, and predating that, predating the QPO was the evaluation process?
Follow.
Yeah.
Yes. If I'm reading this correctly-
Was the original-
QPO, green milk on Tuesdays goes away.
Oh, we'll buy this.
So then every other, every other year was a study year, or?
Right, prior to 15, 16, when the QPO-
Action research year.
So it's asking to go, forget the QPO, ignore that, go back to what's actually in the-
So this is, this is going back to 2000, pre-2013, essentially.
And so the, the QPO stipend still stays on ACAD until ACAD votes it off or whatever? And we could agree with you that QPO is not part of the offer? Or whatever modification you wanna make.
But there would be a stipend still for not doing anything?
No, 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 you're only, no, it's like, there's other, there's other positions that aren't filled.
Yes, right.
So they're on the list, but no one's holding it.
So does this require action?
I, I don't think it would be a terrible thing, just in case we're incorrect on that piece.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Well, if we're incorrect, then we need negotiation with the teachers.
Yeah.
And make, and sign that.
So the-
Violating the contract.
Yeah.
The teachers support this proposal.
Yeah.
It, it, it has gone through the whole vote of the entire teaching staff, but they-
Right, but if, if we're wrong and it's part of, that's why I'm saying we're right, and it's not part of that, which doesn't require the educators-
What was your interpretation, Beth?
Clarifying question on the proposal. In your proposal, old system, there are still evaluators going into classrooms every other year for professional tests, as teachers-
It's not changing. So this is PTS people. So this is people who have good ratings. This is, this aren't, this is not our, our teachers that we're concerned about.
What percentage of your people have bad ratings?
I, I mean, just-
I don't really answer that off the top of my head.
Is it about 5% or do you have a little percent?
No.
So we're saying, this is people who are good people. We're also saying that's 95% of the people.
At least, at least.
So our generation, our, our definition of good is very broad. Okay, just to clarify.
So you're asking, I believe Claire's right, having dug through all the documents, um, you know, February 26th of 2013, the Joint School Committee voted to approve the Professional Growth and Evaluation System as presented. So that was the handbook that said action research year or evaluation year. Then in-
Sorry, what school committee was that? Was that Dover?
Joint School Committee.
2013.
So then, February 5th, 2015, the Regional School Committee voted to institute the stipend for QPOs into, but nobody ever approved the QPOs. That was just a program.
Which is voted this, right, it's just like a club. It's like something on offer.
So moving, so moving forward, it would be nice to have the consensus in support of the school committees to do this, but, um, that's an important piece. Can I just add one other layer of this? Because the DSEA is interested in, in furthering the discussion about the standards, which de facto are in the contract?
Yes.
Yes, there'd have to be an MOU.
So that would have to be an MOU.
The question is, is it part of negotiation? Is it a separate MOU? Last, it was a separate MOU last, that's 2013.
I think the reason it ends up being a separate MOU is because it's, it's a lot of work, and it can derail your, your contract negotiations. Um, in talking to Laura McGovern, she expressed interest in trying to get this done this year. But that's maybe perhaps too ambitious. We do have a lot going on. We've seen it all.
But if, but if what they essentially want to do is just go to the state standards, then it may not be as lengthy a process.
That, that is essentially what they wanna do, according to Laura. I mean, I can't speak for her, Katie.
That needs a little more thought, discussion, and it's a contract issue, so it's an executive session.
Mm-hmm.
Um, which we could add to any meeting somewhere along the way.
Okay.
Let's add it to Maggie's birthday meeting.
December, yeah.
So, then, then I'm getting a sense-
So we voted at the region just the stipend. We didn't, so it just becomes something we're not offering. An administration makes a decision, unless you wanna hear this consensus while-
No, I don't need to hear consensus. I'd rather hear, is anyone having a kind of visceral reaction to our proposal? And if not, we're gonna proceed.
I have reactions to the proposal. I'd rather not have to vote on it, and I don't have to voice my reactions. I'll be good to, to the administration to do what you think is appropriate.
I have an incredibly stupid question. I'm sorry.
There was no such thing, Julie.
I don't understand.
That excuse is over and decided.
Oh, we, are you, like, what?
Can't use that anymore.
I'm sorry, I know, I-
Maggie's birthday degree.
Okay. So, where, they want to get rid of the year one portion of this QPO pilot program?
No.
Okay.
So for every, for every professional teaching status or tenured teacher-
Yeah.
Who has-
They gotta evaluate.
High evaluations in the previous cycle.
Yeah.
Goes into a two-year cycle. Year one was, has been, QPO.
Yeah.
Or perhaps they had the option of action research.
Right, right.
And then year two is the more intensive evaluation, observation year.
Okay.
So we're just taking the QPO thing out of it for the time being, and we probably solidify that, or not even change it again, because if it's already in there, it doesn't need to be changed.
Okay.
So it'll be an action research year followed by an evaluation, an active evaluation year?
Focused evaluation, I think it's called.
So it won't be any QPO years?
No, but within your action research, there's a lot of flexibility to do that kind of peer work.
It's just a different kind of, uh, a year one evaluation. It's a more traditional one?
No, it's just that we're saying you don't have to do it with a QPO. You can work with anybody in your department, you can work with anybody in grade.
I get it. Oh, now I understand. I'm so sorry.
Because we just don't have enough trained people to go around, so we're now saying, pick someone who's meaningful.
Thank you.
Pick something that you love and-
And we actually liked that idea.
Sideways, but the reality is the QPO, a lot of times it wasn't even happening.
Yeah.
Right? And it wasn't even as it was intended where, you know, the trickering folks that knew each other were together. I mean, it could've been like, you know, the AP teacher of the high school was hanging out with the art teacher at trickering, and it just wasn't, like, wasn't making sense in terms of peer evaluation.
Yeah, I get it, I get it, I get it.
Just what you'd hoped for.
Exactly. So I think, and what I'm reading here is what the option is for year one, um, and you guys tell me, but I think we're actually improving on the actual year evaluation.
We're gonna get more-
Sounds like it's a kind of a win everywhere.
And the, the reason this was, uh, time sensitive is because the goals are due for educators on October 15th, which we took the, uh, those are self-imposed, so we pushed it out to November 1st, but the teachers are trying to get their goals done, so we really need to.
So there's no need to take action?
There isn't.
Okay.
Great.
Um, we have some time for you, Andrew. I think we just tick off this last one, which is, um, the review is strategic plan, action plan. Claire, you need to go.
Yeah.
So there's not, uh, I, I, you know, we have slides.
That we spent a lot of time on, but we can overlook them.
That we spent some time on, that we could send to you. That we could send to you.
That we could.
Right? Beth, we could send the slides out to the school committee members. Essentially, what I did of what Beth helped me to do, we'll just leave it at that, what we did, was we highlighted some of the ones that, um, are kind of jumping off the, the-
Our priorities this year.
We'll go quick. Um, excuse me, our priorities this year. Correct. So, I'm gonna move quickly. So, you'll notice that, um, that these, um, this, these strategic priority actions in the handout I just gave you are, well, you can't really see it that well now, but it's, they're color-coded to match the strategic objectives. So if you're looking at the dark blue, you're looking at the resource efficiency. So, you're all familiar with this, so, um, I don't think I need to read through all those for you guys. This, um, mirrors the, uh, the handout, and, um, so, under the first strategic priority action, um, we're talking about innovative, um, Academic Innovation Committee to research cutting-edge practices and trends in both industry and education across the state, nation, and world. So what do we wanna do? A lot of this falls into Beth's leadership of the, um, the Portrait of a Graduate. Would you agree, Beth? And actually, is this the presentation that we were gonna work off of? I thought we had a color coding on.
Yes, there is. So, that's, that's, of the 12 that you see listed under Teaching and Learning, those are really the three that are in the forefront right now, and the others are kind of gearing up behind them.
Right.
You know, you can't do authentic assessments until you do project-based learnings, and you can't do standard-based assessments until you do that. So this is what we're working on right now, which we already have our elementary folks looking at the STEAM curriculum. We're bringing the K through 12 folks together December 4th or 5th to look at it as a team. We have them looking out at other schools. We're encouraging them to visit other places if they need to, and, um, we're happy to provide whatever programming and resources they need to expand STEAM opportunities, K through 12. Portrait of a Graduate, you've been hearing about all along. That'll be the Innovation Committee's work. And FLEX, our FLEX, FLEX kiddos are in fifth grade, and we're preparing to bring them up to the sixth grade next year. So the sixth grade has been collaborating a lot with the fifth grade. They're actually going to be doing some benchmarking assessments with the fifth graders to figure out their actual level of proficiency, so that as the sixth grade teachers write their curriculum, they can also get the resources that are gonna match their skill set.
So, thank you for, for that. I was thinking about that.
I'm sorry.
PowerPoint slides, sheet that had six slides on, and it wasn't meshing well with this, but I, I appreciate that. So, um, yes, so the next one, Health and Wellbeing of, of Students and Staff. The three priorities, and you can look more specifically as to who's doing what when in this handout that I just gave you, but the three priorities that are currently on our radar, continue to explore the impact of race and identity in the classroom, and gain knowledge of culturally responsive practices that will improve students' access to learning and sense of connectedness via the hashtag #WeAreDS initiative. Focus on anti-bullying, marginalization, and community building through actions and communications that specifically teach and reinforce the district's core values. And revisit school start times to include review of applicable current research, assessment of school and community interest, and examination of comparable start, school start types. So these are the biggies on our radar. That's why I said, you know, we have a lot on our plates a few minutes ago, because the start time committee work, for example, needs to get going, like, in the next two weeks for us to initiate that. And there's, I think, three to four members from the joint committees that will participate in that process. Yes. Safe and Innovative Facilities.
Got it.
The communicate-
All right, okay. I don't see it.
They're, they're not safe, though.
So we can skip around.
That's okay. So let me, we've done this one.
Next.
Go ahead.
So this is, this is not Safe and Innovative Facilities. This is Partnerships of Families and Communities. So this is the establishment of the Communications Committee that investigates the benefits of expanded use of social media and focuses on improving home-school communication in a manner that's culturally proficient and inclusive. Promote the Dover Sherburne core values to families and stakeholders, ensuring that they serve as the basis for key decision-making at the district and building level. Continue to provide opportunities and experiences for staff and parents related to student stress or anxieties. I'm just gonna spare you the list of things that we're doing, although if you have questions about these, like the core values and the way we're incorporating the core values into our documents and talking them up with the leadership team and bringing them up in, in public meetings, for example, when we meet with parents or at parent coffees, they're on our letterhead. We're, we're trying to breathe life into it. Beth made a cool placard that has them all kind of in, what do you call those, when they're all kind of spelled out like that in different sizes? There's a term for it.
Wordle.
A wordle, exactly, like a wordle. And I assume it in my office, and those are hanging in the schools. So we're really trying to emphasize the core values. The Communications Committee, again, like the Start Time Committee, needs to begin, but that doesn't mean I can't work on communications along the way as well. And as you know, I have with the newsletter and with the blog, and, so we're trying to enhance that. The Communications Committee is really looking at how, how can we streamline some of our procedures so that we're not tripping all over each other? We all have been, involved in parents in this system, and know you get bombarded with information from a bunch of different sources, and it's too much, so that's a big part of that Communication Committee. And then, sorry, that last one, yes, I'm not even going to that.
Safe and Innovative, do you want me to pick up? I apologize, the slide didn't make it in, but I have it in my head.
Yeah.
Sorry. So the top three here for Safe and Innovative Facilities would be on your chart, the top three.
Yeah.
Conduct a security audit, train all the staff in the security protocols, which you know we've done all, both already, and then make sure that each team and the district, each school and the district have an emergency response team, which we've already brought together, so that work is already underway, and that will continue, and we'll start to pick up the other three moving forward. And then lastly, oh, good. Resource efficiency? Yay, there it is. And that's what you heard tonight. It's the audit of special education and looking at the programs and services to make sure that K through 12, we are aligned. The administrative model, which you heard proposal tonight, and our discussion will continue. And then RTI, you keep hearing about here and there, but it's really looking at, what are we doing in the classroom for all kiddos? What supports are we offering in small groups before we get to that special education level? And we have assistant principals from each of the four schools communicating to make sure that, just like special education, the interventions that we're offering are going to be hopefully more seamless as kiddos move up through the grades.
Any questions, comments?
Could we, definitely, I'd love to have this sent out. I think that'd be great, with the slide that you remember.
Yeah, there's not a order.
Oh, yeah. I don't care about the order, it's just that, thank you, I appreciate. That was really helpful. The highlights, the bullet points, the three was really helpful.
Beth deserves a call for that. We talked about it in theory. She, she put it together. And the color coding is helpful, too. Thanks.
I think that was, that was great.
It's really terrific to see a lot of meat on the bonus. And there's a lot here. I would also encourage, encourage you to kind of get this out to the communities. There's a lot going on.
November 8th.
November 8th is exactly, exactly what I was just gonna say, Brooke. That is, and we're gonna record that, are we?
We-
We're talking about it.
But, no, but we're not.
No, we're not.
I'm being in person.
We, we, we're not. So we do want people to come to that. It's a, it's an opportunity for people to hear specifically how we are working towards these things. We're looking at the academic lens, and we're looking at kind of the social side of the kids, especially that evening, and how, how our work really lines up nicely with Challenge Success, which it does. And I would just say that I, I, I know that sometimes people worry that when we're so focused on SEL, the question becomes, have we forgotten, you know, the importance of meaningful academic experiences for our kids? And the answer is no, we have not forgotten. In fact, we believe, based on research from Challenge Success, that in fact, when kids have those other issues addressed, they are more likely to achieve at higher levels. So these things dovetail nicely. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't stop having conversations about what our offerings look like and how our instruction could improve and be more effective.
Hence, the Academic Innovation Committee.
Hence, the Academic Innovation Committee.
And will this be linked on the website or on a newsletter or?
These again, yeah. That's a good idea. Yes. Updated to include.
Periodically as things progress and while we pay the done.
I actually.
Celebrate that.
Yeah. I, I think that that should be part of the goal setting process. When you think about the district goals, there should be a process where we report